We're in the intros, did life. Thirty seconds away. Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners and welcome to the Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Communications. As Black History Month comes to a close, we wanted to highlight the more than 230 African-American employees who worked as public servants for Sedgwick County. During the month of February, communications shared many of their stories on social media, helping to highlight why they work for our organization. This is a month-long project, so check out the Sedgwick County Facebook page to read some of their stories. The communication team worked hard with human resources to get the name of every African-American employee who works for our organization, so we can recognize them here today through a short video. Please take a look.
This will be the day when all of God's children be able to sing with new meaning, "My country tears of thee, sweet land of liberty of thee I sing, land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims pride."
And Commissioners, as you can see at the end of the video, the Kansas African-American Museum will present Canaan, a cultural presentation, April 1st through 3rd. For tickets, visit TCAM.org. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, under appointments, you have four items to consider. Under New Business, an annual report of property, real property value trends in Sedgwick County from Appraiser Mark Clark, a report from Assistant County Manager Tanya Cole on the office lease agreement for the Ruffin Building downtown, and a report from the Boards of Bends and Contracts, regular meeting on February 16th. Chairman Dennis, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Akeem. I appreciate it. And I want to welcome everyone that's attending today in person and those that are joining us online and on KPTS. I want to call the meeting for 2:23:22, which is the same forward and backward at this time. And Madam Clerk, next item.
Invocation to be led by Sister Joan Berger, Sisters of St. Joseph, please remain standing for this flag salute.
Let us bow our heads. Oh God, generous giver of all life, as the county commissioners gather here today, we ask your guidance, so that they may use up the opportunities presented to them in order to serve others to the best of their abilities. You know the challenges they will face today as they go about the business before them. Do not let any one of them be consumed by their own agendas, projects, or priorities, that they fail to listen to those who attend this meeting with perhaps different agendas and priorities. Give them the strength and courage they need to complete the work before them, and the wisdom to make right and just decisions. We pray for the unity in spite of differences. Make all here willing to stand strong together for the good of all. We ask this in the name, in the name of your, of your son Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whatever due judgment for all.
Sister Berger, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I did not receive any word that we had anyone that sent anything in by email or online last night, and we don't have anyone signed up this morning. So, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of January 19th, 2022.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from January the 19th to February the 2nd, and a special meeting on February the 4th. Move to approve all three. We have a motion and a second A discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item D, accept the resignation of Casey Belknoch from the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department Board of Electrical Appeals.
Thank you. Mr. Papoon.
Chairman Mike Papoon, County Counselor. Item D is to accept the resignation of Mr. Belknoch from the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department as the electrical appeals, on the Electrical Appeals Board. Please accept Mr. Belknoch's resignation.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Move to accept the resignation of Casey Belknoch.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, accept the resignation of Jane Marple from the District Two Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Mr. Chairman, we can take Items E and F together. They both involve resignations from Citizens Advisory Board. Item E is the resignation of Jan Marple from Commissioner Lopez's Citizens Advisory Board, and Item F is the resignation of Janet Federico from your Citizens Advisory Board. Both, I think both of these members said that they're moving out of your district, so they can no longer serve on these boards, but the, please accept the resignations of Ms. Marple and Ms. Federico, Items E and F.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I just really want to thank Jan for all the time she's spent with us and starting this board. I know right at the beginning, it's kind of rough just getting everything kind of organized, so appreciate her time and energy that she's given to this board, and I move that we will accept these resignations.
Well, thank you. And I also want to thank Janet Federico. She did move out of my district, so she can no longer serve. I appreciate her service. She does serve on another committee for Sedgwick County, so she's still serving us, but I want to thank her very much for her service. So I'll second the motion. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Sarah Gooding to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in the First Class City Position Number 16.
Thank you. Mr. Papoon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you remember, we amended our resolution creating the Solid Waste Management Committee a few weeks ago to allow an additional first-class city position, because at the, earlier, City of Wichita was only a first-class city, but now we have the City of Derby as well. The City of Derby has recommended the appointment of Sarah Gooding to the Solid Waste Management Committee. We have prepared a resolution appointing Ms. Gooding to this board, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you very much. Mr. Howell, would you like to make the recommendation?
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate the, the adjustment to this board. I think it's, it's the right thing to do. So I really do appreciate taking time to do this, this way. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. We would adopt a resolution appointing Sarah Gooding to the Board of Solid Waste Management Committee.
Thank you very much. I'll second that. And as she is in the room, Madam Clerk, call roll, and we can swear in.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Good morning, Sarah, and welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. How are you? Good night. I'm Kathy, I'm in Ms. Clark's office, and thank you for calling us, and you are here, and I do solemnly swear the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Sedgwick County's Solid Waste Management Committee. So call me God. Good day. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I would say I've been honored to work for the City of Derby for almost two years now, and one of my duties there is managing their solid waste agreement with Waste Connections. So I am eager to take a next step and represent the City of Derby on this board as well, and contribute what I've learned in that role to the greater county. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your service. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item H, presentation of the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Estate Value Trends in Sedgwick County.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Lark for the record, County Appraiser. This morning, I'm going to be presenting the 2022 Real Estate Mass Appraisal Report. First, let's go over some Appraiser's Office duties. Inspect each property within Sedgwick County every six years. Discover listing value of all property that had significant changes. Update appraisals each year to assure that all properties are valued at fair market value, and January 1st is the official statutory appraisal date. Some key dates to remember when we're talking about values and the Appraiser's Office, January 1st is the official statutory appraisal date. March 1st is the date that we mail real property value notices, and that's what we're talking about today. March 15th, our real property informal meetings begin, and June 1st, the Appraiser certifies the values to the county clerk. And when we certify values, that's real and personal. Valuation considerations. We did take quite a bit into consideration this year, COVID-19. We researched the impacts nationally and locally. We collaborated with other Kansas counties, Johnson County, Douglas, other counties as well. Worked closely with the Property Valuation Division. Looked at supply chain issues which affect both residential and commercial. We talked to developers, suppliers, we talked to manufacturers. There are definitely problems out there. Inflation, well, inflation, as you know, is now reported at seven and a half, approximately seven and a half percent, and it does affect increased cost of building materials, increased cost of labor. It does impact energy and transportation costs. All of that is having an impact on the local economy. Parcel growth in Sedgwick County. The number of real estate parcels in Sedgwick County increased 1,527 parcels from 2021 to 2022. Parcels by classification in Sedgwick County. Residential makes up 79% of the parcels, commercial 6%, agricultural 7%, vacant 3%, exempt 3%, farmstead 2%, not-for-profit, only 99 parcels, it doesn't really register, and then other has only three parcels, and that doesn't really register, but you always ask what the other is, and so other is the Shooting Lodge in Kechai Township, and then there's two parcels on South Broadway for the Polo Ranch. Sales activity for all classes of real property increased by 1,401 sales, or 10.2% from 2020 to 2021. Low interest rate drove the demand. New construction, all classes of real property, increased by 212, or 3.6%. And this data typically does not include permits for roof, siding, towers, that sort of thing, because it skews the data so much. However, we do get permits on that, on those types of things as well. Residential. Now, this is a question that always comes up, and I've included some additional information here. Residential property represents about 59% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County. However, last year, I was asked what percentage of this residential comprised of the total real property assessed valuation, and that is 65%. New dwelling construction. New dwellings are defined as single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. The number of new dwellings increased by 48, or 3.2% from 2020 to 2021. Most of the activity of single-family homes between $175,000 and $225,000. This adds to the total available housing stock, but it still falls short of the numbers that we saw prior to the Great Recession. Residential inventory. Now, these are some interesting charts. This is for Sedgwick County only, 2017 through 2021, and the bottom line is 2021. The month's supply of available housing stock for sale in a normal market is between four and six months. If you look towards the top of that chart, you see four with a red line. That is the bottom of a normal market. We are nowhere close to a normal market. We are out of balance, and demand far exceeds supply of housing stock. Supply is limited due to the high cost of building. Residential inventory, and this is large county comparison. The slide shows large counties in Kansas are experiencing very low supplies of available housing stock. This isn't anything new, and it doesn't just impact Sedgwick County. It is statewide, and it is nationwide. Residential inventory, median days on the market. Median days on the market is defined or measured by the date of the listing of the property to the date of the contract on the property. So, in January 2021, we were at 10 days. In March, we were at five, and then April through June, we were at three. We ended the year about six days on the market. This is indicative of a hot residential real estate market, and that is clearly out of balance. Let's look at the large county comparison. Now, the green line that you see down at the bottom is Shawnee County, and they have been down below us for, for quite a while, but we are a close second. Interesting, if you look at the blue line, that there is Douglas County, and that, the two peaks there, they are in relation to the City of Lawrence and KU, Kansas University. So, each market, each real estate market has its own dynamics, but the two at the very bottom are the ones that are suffering the most. Median sell price. The median sell price increased by 12.15% to $203,000. That is an increase of $22,000 from 2020 to 2021. Commercial. Commercial property represents about 30% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County. However, commercial represents 32% of the total real property assessed valuation. Commercial property sales. From 2020 to 2021, commercial sales increased 113, or 19.3%. Low interest rates, and investors seeking safety, and a stable rate of return drove the increase in commercial sales. East Coast and West Coast money and Middle East money came into the market. We could see that, and so this is known as a place that is safe and has a stable rate of return. We don't burn our buildings. We have law and order, and that attracts during times of chaos around the world and in this country, mark, money into this market. Commercial building permit activity. The number of commercial building permits increased by 86, or 8.2%. Contractors and developers continue to report shortages of skilled labor and shortages of materials due to the supply chain issues. Typically, it takes longer than a year to complete a project. Last year, I talked about that, and this year, we put a slide together to try to show you exactly what this, what we're seeing out in the market. You don't see 2020 and 2021 data on this slide, because there are so many open permits. This data is based only on closed permits of new commercial buildings. It doesn't include remodels or additions. So looking at 2019, on average, and this is just average, average number of days, 413 days to complete a project. And you can see that that number is growing, and we believe that when we show you the 2020 data next year and the 2021 data, that it will be showing that it is definitely taking longer. Preliminary. The 2021 preliminary mid-year sales ratio. Now, remember, this here is mid-year. This is not final numbers. Residential, 84.7. Commercial, 75.1. Those numbers will improve. Commercial, yes, it is low. However, most of the commercial sales occur during the second half of the year, so that will improve. Also, remember that our office was in statistical appliance for 2021. The numbers appearing on this chart are where we started the 2022 valuation process. Large numbers of residential sales and commercial sales, along with increased prices, drove ratios lower. PVD guidelines require us to be between 90 and 110. Please look at the chart, and you will see that we basically shoot for a 95 ratio, and we believe that is the best way to do that. 95 is a more cautious and conservative approach to valuation. We believe that is the correct way to do that. Also, you see that the numbers there, these are final ratios, and you can find them on the PVD Annual Ratio Study Publication, but those numbers are all in compliance. Also, the data points that you see are on the next slide for commercial are also in compliance, and even though the preliminary mid-year sales ratio numbers look like this, the 84.7 and the 75.1, we believe that we will be in compliance once again for 2022. We believe that's going to be very possible. Agricultural. We lost some ag land due to new developments. However, there is 436,829 acres, or 68% of the land in Sedgwick County is devoted to agricultural use. The agricultural property represent, represents less than 1% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County. Also, the Department of Revenue Property Valuation Division sets the agricultural use values for the entire state, and there is cooperation with the KU, excuse me, the Kansas State Agricultural Department, and also their Statistical Department, and they work very closely with PVD to set those values. So, we come to the slide that most people want to see the most, the 2022 valuation summary. Residential parcels. 9% will experience a no change in value. 88% will see an increase in value with a typical change of 7%. 3% will experience a decrease in value, typical change 4%. Commercial parcels. 36% will experience a no change in value. 47% will experience an increase in value, typical change 6%. 17% will experience a decrease in value, typical change 3%. Agricultural parcels. 30% will experience a no change in value. 25% will experience an increase in value, typical change of 11%, and that is due to irrigated land, and that equates to roughly $40 of ag use valuation. 45% will experience a decrease in value with a typical change of 3%. Now, the next three slides are probably three slides that Commissioner Howell will enjoy the most, because he always asks for this every year, so we just went ahead and included it here. So, for residential, commercial, and agricultural, we basically go through, and for tax years 2014 through 2022, we 2014 through 2022, we have the percent of parcels with no change in value, percent of parcels with an increase in value, the median percent change for increase, the percent of parcels with a decrease in value, and the median percent change for decrease. And once again, that is for valuation summary for residential, for commercial, and for agricultural. I won't belabor the point, however, if you have any questions on that, feel free to let me know, and I'll be glad to spend some time with you. Mailing of valuation notices. The Cedric County Appraisers Office will only mail notices to property owners that experienced a change in the appraised value or classification from 2021. Approximately 195,330 real property valuation notices will be mailed for 2022, which equates to about 86% of all properties in Cedric County. Accessing value notices if your value or classification didn't change. A lot of people usually think, gee, I can't appeal my value because I didn't get a notice in the mail. Yes, you can. Everyone can appeal their value. Property owners who did not receive a notice in the mail may view the appraisal information for their property beginning March 1 online at www.cedriccounty.org, which will include instructions on how to file an appeal. The appeals process. If the owner, if property owners don't think that their values reflect market value, or they would like an explanation of how the value was determined, they can fill out the back of the value notice and return it to Cedric County Appraisers Office within 30 days of the date indicated on the front of the notice, and that's important. It needs to be within 30 days, and it is clearly marked on the front of the value notice. Appeal meetings will begin March 15, 2022, and will be conducted via telephone. Uniform and equal. Please remember that the county appraiser is required by law to value property in a uniform and equal manner and should not be considered an adversary. Increases or decreases in property values do not change the amount of top tax dollars needed for local services. Now, I'm just going to take a moment and talk about personal property. Personal property represents about 3.5% of the total value, total assessed value. Personal property renditions are due back by March 15 to avoid, to avoid penalty. Personal property valuation notices will be mailed April 29. The deadline to file a personal property appeal is May 16. And as you can tell by the chart there, the personal property accounts continue to, to grow. And on the next slide, you see what is accounting, or really driving the increases in the personal property accounts. And it is the individual personal property, that blue line at the top, that includes your watercraft, that includes ATVs, mopeds, that sort of thing. The red line in the center is your CIME, that's your commercial industrial machinery and equipment. That continues to decline, but an interesting thing is when it comes to the renewable energy exemptions that are out there, the state legislature is looking at sunsetting some of those, and if they do, all of that equipment would come back to the personal property taxable. And oil and gas is the bottom line, and that is steady, as it has been for quite a while. I would conclude with saying that customer service is very important to us, and that we have an information and assistance division at, at the Ronald Reagan Building. It is at 271 West Third Street, Suite 501. Our phone number is 316-660-9000. Please give us a call, go to our website. You can get all kinds of information, sales and values in your neighborhood. You can get property record cards, cost reports. If you want an explanation about, and you don't understand something about how your property is valued, you can ask questions. I encourage everybody to, to look at your value notice. So many people get their value notices, and oh, this isn't a tax bill, and they just throw it aside, and, you know, I always, I hear this every year. Well, didn't you get your, well, I didn't know what it was, or I didn't pay attention to it. I didn't look at it. I forgot about it. It's important that you look at that, and if you have questions, ask, seek information, but if, if you still think that you need assistance, flip that thing over, fill it out, and get it to the Appraisers Office so that we can schedule a hearing, an appeal. We want to spend time with you and make sure that you understand what has happened to your property value. There is one other thing that, and I'm visiting with Commissioner Howell, and I don't have the entire slide. I, I do apologize, I don't have the slide here, but you do have the handout, and there is a third page to this. You only have two, and I'll get the third page over. It didn't print. But the total assessed value. Now, the pie chart is one way of looking at this, but you also have the assessed value by class and year. And if you look at that, that tells a story about where your assessed value is landing the most. And you can think through all the legislation that has been passed and tax shifts and so forth. There's a story to tell. The other slide that didn't print is the percentage of total value by class and year, and that one, I will get over to you today because that has its own story to tell. Commissioners, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll stand for them.
Thank you. We lit up. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for the presentation. This is one of those presentations that I think is one of the most important we, we receive over the entire year. I do appreciate those extra charts this year. This is very helpful to have those, those histories in front of us. I am, I'm curious, you have nothing to do with Senate Bill 13 and send it out to value. That's not, has nothing to do with you, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I have a, I have a trick question for you. I think you'll pass this, though. All right? Under Senate Bill 13, we have responsibility to, to pass a level budget or notify taxpayers of the change in our, in our property tax collections.
That's correct.
And if we, if we did not increase property taxes at all, so we passed a budget exactly the same dollars and pennies as last year, let's just say every single property went up 7%, because I, I'll just say inflation rate was 7.5%. Say every property in Cedric County had an increase in value of 7.5%. But the budget, the dollars were exactly the same as last year. Would people have to pay more in property taxes?
No.
That's interesting. And if we saw, if everybody, if everybody had a decrease, let's say of 7%, we pass the same property tax budget as last year, would people have to pay less property taxes?
No.
No, of course not. You know, there's a, there's a, there's a misunderstanding between evaluations and taxes. And I guess the way I like to describe this is the, the, the assessed value, the evaluations that you provide really describes how we, how we divide that pie. I call it a pie. We pass a budget, this determines how big the pie is, and what your, what your, what your evaluations do is they, they tell us how to divide that pie, so we know how much of that total pie is, belongs to each individual parcel, if you will. So, if everybody goes up the same percentage or goes down the same percentage, it doesn't change what they pay. The only thing that changes what they pay is if, number, two things. Number one, if we pass a bigger budget, then they'll, then overall, we have more, 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 more pie to divide up, if you will. Or if their evaluation goes up differently than everybody else they live with. So, if they went up 20% and everybody else has went up 5%, then they would have a bigger share of the pie. So, there's a, there's a misunderstanding. So, Senate Bill 13 is interesting because I'm really looking forward to a very comprehensive tax notification that goes out to, to people, which is a, which is a new mailing. It's, Senate Bill 13 requires we send out a new piece of mail that they've not seen before. It's assuming that we, if we have a budget with a bigger property tax burden, as I, you know, considering the 7.5% inflation, it's probably fairly likely that will happen. But that tax notification needs to be very comprehensive. I don't know who, this might be a separate conversation, but I'd like to know who's developing that for Cedric County. And I have a, I have a strong opinion about making that very comprehensive so people can see the various tax jurisdictions over a number of years in both dollars and mill levy, so that people can see exactly, have some historical view of what's happened to their mill levy and their tax dollars by jurisdiction, by a number of years, let's say four or five years. And to me, that, I can kind of envision this in my head, what this would look like, but I don't know who's developing that for Cedric County. And to me, the, we all know inherently that everything costs more. I look at two-by-fours as, as one of my go-to items I look at as a commodity, or look at gasoline prices. We all know that things cost more. There's no question. Food costs more, gasoline costs more, utilities, all that seems like every commodity that you could ever buy in any store, it's more today than it was a year ago. So, it's understandable that housing values have gone up. And I think that we have all experienced a very hot real estate market, which also drives, home values go up because, again, supply and demand. If there's a greater demand and there's less of a supply, then prices tend to go up. That's, that's economics 101. But having said that, people get mad when they get their notifications. I actually, I get more, and I'll say this is true, I get more phone calls and angry emails after you mail these notifications because people are mad about their, their value of their property going up 10% or 15% or whatever the number would be. I get more phone calls about that than I do about the budget, which is interesting to me because it just, it just explain, I guess it makes my point that people are not, are not aware of the size of the pie we're passing, that they're not, they're not tuned into that part of the discussion, they're tuned into the fact that their, their property value went up. And again, the average is going to be, it looks like the average for most taxpayers is going to be around 7%. So, if it's less than 7, then I guess you'll pay slightly less than yours, your historical slice of the pie. But if it's more than 7%, you might have a slightly bigger share of the slice, slightly bigger slice of that pie. But the size of the pie altogether is what we do up here when we pass a budget. So, I don't know if we can make a, a visual, a visual cartoon or some type of infographic that kind of explains the, the two different parts of this, but I think there's, there's a, there's an education part that, I, I'm, I've been here a long time, and I, and I, every single year, I spend so much time trying to explain those principles to people who are angry about their valuations going up, and we know they're going to go up, so I know we're going to get a lot of angry phone calls. And so, anyway, having said all that, I want to say thank you for this, thank you for the extra graphics. This is really good. You did a good job this year.
Thank you.
And my, I guess my last question is this, do you, do you feel any pressure from the County Commission?
No, I don't.
To, to change valuations?
No, I do not.
I want to make sure that stays that way. We, we have no pressure on you to do anything with valuations. I don't want to tell you to make them go up or go down. It's none of my business. You are independent, you do your job according to Kansas law, and you, and you report to the Kansas Department of Revenue.
Correct.
We pay your salary, but you don't work for us.
Correct.
All right? So, having said that, you do your job, and your, your job is to be fair and consistent, accurate, and, 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 you know, I think consistent and accurate are really, really great words. And I think the one thing that really speaks to me is the sales ratio study. That sales ratio tells me we are typically undervaluing properties in Cedric County. And every year, you, you try to do this little catch-up thing, you're trying to get back to that 95% line, and we never have got there. In all the years I've been here, we never have been up to that 95% lines yet. So, that is an interesting point. Thank you for all you do, Mark. Thank you, Chairman, for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Mark. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Yesterday, when we spoke, we talked about an additional graphic I requested from you about showcasing where the growth, the growth has happened. So, back on page five of your presentation, your partial growth. So, I wonder when that might be available? And I just want to point out, you know, you know, for example, the League of Municipalities just voted Mays, Kansas, the fastest growing city in, in Kansas.
Right.
With, they have 11 new housing developments, almost 140 new homes. In addition, Valley Center is also proposing a couple of new with the Prairie Lakes subdivision. So, I'm just kind of curious if you could map that out for us?
Absolutely.
As far as where that growth is really happening so that we can see sort of hot pockets of Cedric County?
We can definitely do that.
And when do you expect to have that?
I would say that you could have that within a week.
Okay. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, again, thank you for being here. Thanks for our visit ahead of time of this presentation. Just a quick comment is that your slide number 24 is very valuable, followed up by the, by the data backup of the history on 25, 26, 27. That, that's very valuable. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, because when you showed me 24, I thought, wow, what's the history? And then I didn't look ahead, so. But anyway, and then, so thank you again for all you do, and especially noteworthy is, I want to thank you and the staff, if you share with your staff. I don't get a lot of calls, but I do get some, and I've been, and emails, and it seems to work for me better that I, I hand those people directly to you all. You explain everything, and I've even had some follow-up responses back from some of those that say, hey, that was really helpful for me to, that way, I don't have to understand your business as much as you do, and, and I will continue to, to forward and connect residents and citizens and commercial property owners to you and your staff, and I just want to be on record as saying thank you for the response that you do.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Meitzner, and for all commissioners, if you have property owners that have questions, or if you have questions, please feel free to ask. We're, we're there to help.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, Mark, I echo those words. The majority of the emails and phone calls I get that don't have anything to do with COVID or masks relate to property taxes, and they start soon as you mail out the, the updated appraisals. So, I expect to receive a lot of emails and, and phone calls here after the first of March, but as Commissioner Meitzner said, I always send those over to you. You don't work for us, but you do a great job of answering those. You always info me back on any of the responses that you provide to the community on any of the questions, so I appreciate that. I, I want to make sure that we continue to do that. So, your report really has some good news and some not-so-good news. Most people are going to see that their, their personal worth is going up. That's good news. But also, it kind of shows that inflation is going up also, and that's kind of the bad news, is some of this is driven by inflation. So, everything's going up. I agree with Commissioner Howell that this, your valuation notices that go out do not mean that their, their taxes are going up necessarily. Now, the same thing that I just talked about on home valuations and so forth affect the county. Everything that we buy, everything that we do is cost more money than it did in the past. So, will there be an increase in the amount of money used necessary to be able to continue government? Absolutely. Just things like hiring people. Right now, we're understaffed across the board, and it's costs more to, to pay for the new employees. Mike Papoun just sent us an email yesterday that said that he's losing an attorney because they can get a whole lot more money someplace else. So, if we're going to keep the good people, we're going to have to pay them a little bit more, sometimes maybe a lot more in order to be able to keep them. If we go down and, and we buy diesel fuel for Jim Weber sitting in the back room, it's going to cost us more. So, I just want everybody to know that some of the increases that you're going to have, we're going to have to use those as we're preparing the budget this year. So, that doesn't impact you. We never ask you to increase the valuations whatsoever. Again, as Commissioner Howell said, you do not work for us, you work for PVD. So, I, but this is a good time to let the community know that there's probably going to be some increases in the future. So, again, I appreciate the briefing that you provided us today. I know that Lindsay appreciates it because she's going to help us prepare this budget that we're going to pass in August. So, this all feeds into the decision-making process that we have as we move forward.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. I move that we receive and file. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item I, office lease agreement for the Ruffin Building downtown.
Morning, Tanya.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I am here this morning to present to you the lease agreement at the Ruffin Building downtown, 100 North Broadway. Before I get started, I would like to introduce Rachel Lang and Hunter Lemunyan. They are here with Lang Real Estate and represent our on-call real estate brokers. Okay, before I get started into our lease agreement, I do want to give a little bit of background of why we are here today and talking about the lease. If you will recall, in 2021, we talked extensively about the courts and the court backlog that was occurring between District Court and the DA and what drove us to needing space to help the District Court and DA with that court backlog. And you approved a $7 million project budget to help the courts with space. And what that will do is provide an additional courtroom on the seventh floor, two additional courtrooms on the eighth floor, an additional courtroom on the ninth floor, and appellate space for three judges on the 11th floor. And then we will remodel space on the second floor and the third floor for the District Attorney's Office. And so that will take out the Register of Deeds and clerk space on the second floor and the County Commission, County Manager's Office and Communications and County Counselor's Office on the third floor. And so that's what's really driving to take the administration offices out of the courthouse and provide space for District Court and the DA in, in our courthouse. And at the same time, District Court is requesting two additional District Court judges and one magistrate judge. And they are also, with those judges, they will also be looking into a Veterans Court and a Mental Health Court for that space. So next steps for that court backlog, and again, I'm just speaking to what we're doing here at the courthouse. We have awarded the Architectural and Engineering Award, so that's been completed. And they are currently working on the design for those courtrooms and the second and third floor. So that is currently underway. We believe that the construction documents will take about four to six months. So completion of that will be between April and June of this year. The remodel timeline, we believe, will take about 12 to 18 months. So that's the construction that will occur in the courthouse. And so approximate, excuse me, approximate completion will be about April to December of 2023. That's going to be the completion in the courthouse. So when those courtrooms and then the second and third floor will be completed for the District Attorney's Office. So let me get into now the lease space at the Ruffin Building. So in October of 2021, we contacted our on-call real estate broker, and that's Lang Real Estate, and we began our search for lease space. We said we were looking for approximately 35,000 plus square feet of office-ready space. At that time, we thought we would be ready for moving around April 20 of '22. We told them that we preferred to be downtown Wichita area, but we would consider all proposals. And we were looking for about a 30 to 36-month lease. What we received back was seven responses that include 125 North Market, that was the New York Life Building, 301 North Main Street, that's Epic Center, 1501 East Douglas Street, that's McCormick Armstrong Building, 100 North Broadway, that's the Ruffin Building downtown, 345 Riverview, that's the Riverview Building, 9111 East Douglas, that's the, excuse me, Ruffin Building East, and then 250 North Water, that's Murphin Plaza. That was a lease-to-own proposal that was given to us. So out of those seven locations, we shortlisted and toured four of those locations. We toured 125 North Market, 301 North Main Street, 100 North Broadway, and 250 North Water. So out of those lease spaces, what we were looking for and what we really honed in on was convenience to the public. So what we were looking for is what is the, the location of this building? And then within that space, we wanted to understand what the convenience was going to be to the public within, within the space of that building. And then we also wanted to understand parking, what the parking was going to be like for employees and then parking for the public. We wanted to understand what the value and the cost was going to be for the county. So packaged altogether, what was going to be the lease cost? Was it going to be a full-service lease? Was it going to be a triple net? And what was the cost of the remodel going to be? And then were there any additional perks to this cost of the lease? And then, of course, is, was there going to be adequate space? Was there going to be enough space to put all seven departments in the space? And then what were the conditions within the space? Was it structurally sound? Was it mechanically sound? All of those things, plumbing, electrical, mechanical. So as we toured those four locations, that's what we were looking for. So that led us, from those four locations, that led us to the Ruffin Building downtown. So this lease looks at 43,877 runnable square feet. On the first floor, we have 12,626 square feet. And we will put the Register of Deeds and the County Treasurer on this floor. So what we did was we put the most public-facing departments on the first floor to have that convenience for the public. Between the Register of Deeds and the County Treasurer, they will share a break room, a conference room, and a single, single-use restroom. And there are additional restrooms that will be on the second floor for those departments. On the sixth floor, starting from west to east, we will have 31,251 square feet. And it will start with Finance, County Clerk, County Manager, and Strategic Communications, County Counselor, and Board of County Commissioners. Within that space, we will share a large conference room, a shared break room, and restrooms. Additionally, in the space in the Ruffin Building, there is a large auditorium in the lower level. That's about a 215-seat auditorium that we are looking at to do some renovations to hold the County Commission meeting rooms. Or, excuse me, meeting, let me back up, County Commission meetings. And then additionally, there is a, there is an additional large conference room also on the lower level. There will be 110 parking stalls for employees in the parking garage. And then we will have 10 visitors parking stalls that will be marked in the parking garage. Additionally, at the Ruffin Building, this location is on the City of Wichita Transit system, and there is a stop right there on, in the front of the Ruffin Building. We're also working on 15 surface parking stalls just north of the building, of the Ruffin Building. And then additionally, they are working on opening the cafeteria that will be on the second floor, and there is a restaurant on the ninth floor. So this is a picture, an image of the Ruffin Building. And then you can see there on the square there is the Ruffin Building. Right there on Broadway, you can see just the walkway there, and that takes you to the garage. And then if I can, I'd like to just point out that there is street parking on both sides of Broadway. There's street parking on both sides of Douglas, both sides of Topeka, and then on First Street as well. So this is a full-service lease that we will lease for $16 a square foot. It includes janitorial, utilities, and maintenance. So that's a total of $702,032 that we will pay annually or $58,502 monthly. We will pay that through ARPA funding. This is a 37, 37-month lease. We're only paying 36 months for the lease. So they are allowing us one month that we will not pay, and that's June 1. So the month of June, we'll be allowed to move in all of our departments at, at no cost. So the, the lease is from July 1 of 2022, and will go through June 30th, oh, I see a typo there, through June of 2025. Excuse me for that typo. Tenant improvements. So the landlord will provide improvements not to exceed $100,000. They will provide the contractor, and all written cost estimates will be provided and approved by us, the tenant. And then we are providing the architect, which is Schaefer Johnson Cox and Frye, Justin Graham, to design our county space. We do have some renewal and extension terms. We have a short-term holdover, which is 90 days after the expiration date, and the rent will increase to $18 during that time. Or we also have a renewal option of three successive periods of one year each, and that rent will increase to $18 a square foot during that time as well. There are some additional moving costs that I'd like to go over as we would move into this lease space. IT costs, that, that's our networking cost to put us into the first floor, the sixth floor, and the auditorium. That's about $75,000. The auditorium cost is about $127,000. That is to move all of our, actually, that's to purchase new because this equipment here is about 12 years old. And I think the vendor that we spoke to has some concerns with moving this equipment over. So we would purchase new in that auditorium, and then we would be able to take that equipment from the auditorium into new space. So that is video equipment, audio equipment, lighting. Commissioner Cruz, I know you have some concern with the lighting in that auditorium. So that would set us up for commission meetings in that auditorium space. Movers and is about $70,000. That's to move seven departments over. John Marshall, that is our cubicle furniture. Estimate about $105,000 to move all the cubicle furniture over. Again, seven departments. The design work, that's about $20,000. And then tenant improvements, that's above the $100,000 that the landlord would be putting into. It's about $167,317. Courthouse police, we will be having one full-time courthouse police officer over there, but we are budgeting for one and a half so that, that courthouse police can take, you know, of course, vacation and sex. So we need to have about one and a half FTE over there. He will be, or he or she will be over there rotating between the sixth floor and the first floor of our location, as well as, as monitoring for commission meetings. And then treasure technology, that is cameras that we'll need to install for the treasurer's location. And then storage, I don't know if we'll need storage, but should we need storage if, if we can't bring all of our furniture over? I've estimated for three years of storage. So in total, $678,220 for additional moving costs. I think you've seen this, but I wanted to share this with the public. This is what our first floor would look like. So addition of three offices there and then cubicle furniture. You can see the break room there and the restroom and IT closet there for County Treasurer space. The brown there to the right is the Register of Deeds. I'll move into that space. So that's floor one, again, Register of Deeds, two offices there, and a conference room, and then cubicle space. And then this depicts our sixth floor. So again, moving from west to east is Finance. You see our shared conference room, County Clerk, County Manager and Strategic Communications, County Counselor, and then Board of County Commissioners space. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions for Tanya? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just curiously, can, how many square feet do these agencies occupy currently compared to what we're moving into?
If you give me just a second. Okay. I'm going to rattle this off. Okay. So Register of Deeds currently has 5,080 square feet. The Treasurer currently has 2,195 square feet in their first floor down in the courthouse. But they are also bringing staff from their Douglas location. Finance has 7,220 square feet. The Clerk has 4,035 square feet. Manager and Communications has 5,125 square feet. County Counselor has 3,505 square feet. The Board of County Commissioners has 4,575 square feet, which includes the Board of County Commissioners room. And I think that covers everything.
Let me just make sure I got those numbers correctly. You said B O C C was 4505?
4575.
4575. What was the Finance again?
7,220 square feet.
Okay. I have not added that up, but it looks like, it looks to me like not counting the, not counting the auditorium down in the base, down on the bottom floor. The approximate square footage here is about 43,000. I'd just like to know, are we, are we going into a smaller space or a bigger space?
Well, I would tell you relative to what we're, the space that we have for this, we're about consistent with the space that we are currently, we currently have now. We're adding a little bit more, but if, if you look at the space, a lot of it has to do with corridor space to walk in between, you know, these departments. So we're adding a little bit of space just, just for, you know, you know, trying to think, corridor space or to walk around these departments.
I understand that the parking, how many, how many floor, how many levels is that parking garage that we will be in?
Six.
Six floors. Are the 110 spaces anywhere in that garage? Are they mostly at the top? Or do we know?
It's, it's unreserved. Those, those 110 employees spots are unreserved.
Well, most of the spots, I think, from the third floor and below are, are all reserved. So the unreserver at the top.
I drove through that garage the other day. It's, it's pretty random when you drive through that. It's, there's, there is some reserved spots, but it's randomized as you drive through the lot.
I read the contract. I think we have like 100, like 10 extra permits altogether. The contract shows, I think, 120 permits and they expect no more than, I think, I can't remember exactly what it said now, but there's 10 extra permits, I understand.
Correct.
So if we have people visit us, are we, are we be able to validate their parking if they come and they're visiting them?
You can, yes. And they will, they will, we will be able to pay that. If, if we validate, they will bill us at the end of the month.
Okay. And if we, if we go over the 37 months, it says you have options for one year at a time. That's a pretty big chunk of time. Any chance we could get a month-to-month option at the end of this, if we needed it?
I think we could go back and negotiate if we wanted to, but we also have that 90-day holdover as well.
I think we need to have that option because it's a little dicey towards the end of this. We're trying to find some permanent space, but let's just say we're off by one month. I don't want to have to sign a one-year agreement if we're not, we don't have a place to go. To me, that's, that's a huge amount of time, knowing how, how difficult this may be to find permanent space. I think we need to have an option for month-to-month. So I, I would like to approve the contract with that option. To me, I think the month-to-month is, is a need. I think Mike wants to say something.
Yeah. We discussed this with Mr. Ruffin's attorneys in detail, Commissioner. They're not going to go for that. You know, when you have this type of large commercial rental transaction, they're looking for the next tenant afterwards, and they're not wanting to be strung along or string potential clients they have along after the three, three-year period. We, we had to work hard to get the extra 90 days. So I'm just telling you, that will be a deal breaker probably on this if we try to go month-to-month after that. So we just need to be able to figure out if we're going to move out. We're going to have in about two and a half years or two and three quarters years, we should have a pretty good idea where we are and whether we need that additional time or not, or decide at that point what, what we want to do. But we're not going to be able to go through a month-to-month.
In terms, on this down select here, did, I see that we went from seven options down to four options. I'm curious, did we, did we seriously? I'm curious, did we, did we seriously look at anything outside the downtown footprint? I mean, I don't know if we did or not. Seems like some of these, some of these ones are a little further out, like the, um, the, the East Ruffin Building, for example, would be, I was just curious. I have no, I have no data on the details of those types of buildings. I'm just curious if, if we actually ever really seriously considered anything outside the downtown footprint. I feel like we're still kind of focused on downtown.
Well, you're correct. I mean, we, we did focus on downtown. I think there were, there were two things with the Ruffin Building, East Douglas. One was, I think, that they were a little bit over forty thousand square feet on available space for that, and then the other thing was that they were very far east for that location.
In terms of convenience, I mean, one thing about, if you're driving, most people drive to our offices, but it's right off of Kellogg. So again, in terms, in terms of convenience, it may be a little bit further east, but it's very close to a main, a main artery through, through our city. So it's, you know, if you're, if you can get to Kellogg, you can get there pretty easily. In fact, that's, I'd say it might be easier to get to the East Ruffin Building off of Kellogg than it would be to get to the, to this Ruffin Building off of Kellogg Downtown in some ways because of the parking garage, parking garage situation. All right, so it sounds like the month-to-month thing is, is a, is a, is a no-go, but I, I feel like that's gonna be probably my biggest concern about this right now. When was this building built again?
Give me a second here and I can look that up. You might have to give me more than a second. Can I get back with you on that?
Current courthouse, I think, was nineteen fifty-seven. Way the newspaper made it sound like, 'cause we're moving up to some really fancy digs, and we're just gonna move up, move it on up, and I guess I don't view it that way. I think this is a, it's an adequate space, but it's not, and it is a beautiful building, don't get me wrong, but the spaces we're gonna fit into are not configured wonderfully for our, for our use, but. Anyway, it's a much more modern building, I think it's nineteen, early eighties or something like that. I'm not sure.
Nineteen seventy-four.
Oh, seventy-four.
Yeah.
That makes sense, okay. So again, so I would, I would view this as a, it's a, it's an adequate building, but it's not perfectly configured for our use. It's not, it's not a design we would choose if we had total freedom here. So I guess I'd just say we are, we are doing what we can to, to solve this courthouse issue, but I wouldn't view this as we're moving on up to some luxurious, beautiful, wonderful place. I think this is a temporary location, and we're gonna make it work, and I appreciate that. So as this is characterized, I, I looked at the, the articles that came out on the weekend, and they made, and they made it sound like we're moving on up, things are gonna be even better, and we're wasting people's money, and I don't think that's at all what this is. We're doing this because we need to, we have no other options, and we're doing this because the courts need the space, and we're going to, we're gonna make this work. But I would not consider this to be an easy thing for us to do, so we're gonna make it work. So thanks again for all the information, and thank you, Chairman, for the, Chairman for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Tanya, for all your work on this. I just have a couple of questions. On page four, the tenant improvements, it talks about landlord will provide contractor. So landlord will provide improvements not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, and they will provide the contractor. So if we have renovations that are over a hundred thousand dollars, how much are the renovations? Can you reiterate that for me real fast?
Yes. Currently renovations are estimated at two hundred sixty-seven thousand. And that, those run, those estimates are what our architect believes the renovations cost will be. And so the landlord will pay up to a hundred thousand, and then we are paying in excess of a hundred thousand. So if they, if it comes in less based on what, you know, the contractor is providing us the cost for it, then, then we, of course, would pay less. But those are the estimates as of right now.
So are we required to go out for bid for the additional, anything over a hundred thousand dollars since it will be county funds?
Since this is the, this is the landlord's contractor, it's, it's all being done through, through the landlord, and, but we are reviewing those estimates.
Okay. The second question I have would be the safety concerns with the parking garage. Did we check on cameras and what, what is the security like in the parking garage?
I, I have not talked to the landlord on that. I can check with him again, I can check with him on that. When I drove through the parking garage, actually, the other day, their security was actually walking through the parking garage. So I will check. I think your concern was in the stairwells, is that right? And I walked, actually, I actually parked and, and went through the stairwell, and I, you know, when you're going to get to the walkway, you just have to walk one step down or a flight of steps down to get over to the elevator. But I will check with them and, and see what we can do about some of the security concerns that you have.
Okay, and then just security concerns in the building as well. This is a pretty, you gotta go through metal detectors here, and that won't be required at this building, and so I just wonder how we're going to address that, considering we've had a few not-so-pleasant experiences in here with, with community members. So I just, I wanna make sure that I've stated that publicly before.
Okay, and let me just state again, so we will have one courthouse police that will be rotating between the sixth floor and the first floor, and then they also have security in the building as well. But if, if there's anything else I can do to help alleviate some of that, please let me know, but, but we did, we are adding a courthouse police officer that will be rotating between first floor and, and sixth floor.
Okay. In talking with some staff members, understanding that this is going to be a temporary space, but there were some concerns about not only how the public interacts with county government and county courts and how they do intersect when you have to pay bills and those kinds of things, and then how our staff interacts with each other within county, county government. And so, like the mailroom and how delivering mail and all those, you know, functions of county government. And so I wonder, you know, over this period of time, taking into consideration how the public interacts as one account, when we're looking at designing a new building, because that's ultimately what we're going to have to do, how the public interacts with county government, both administration functions and the court system, and then how our staff interacts. And so if we, you know, we're, we're thinking about how, you know, one person goes to the, you know, the fifth floor or whatever the case may be, like having a map of how people interact with us, I think will help us configure a new space that is designed for the public to interact with us, considering that it is their building. So I just wanna take that into consideration. You know, ultimately, this will allow us to build some specialty courts. That really kind of sets us up for better outcomes, which I think is what we've all kind of been talking about. And so it sets us up for better outcomes for our citizens who find themselves in our court system through a VA court, a mental health court, more space for our drug court. And so while fifty-eight some thousand dollars a month seems like a really hefty price tag, which I do believe it is, I think this is setting us up for better outcomes, and I, and I wanna reiterate that because the funds that we're utilizing to do this, we've never seen before. So I'm glad that we're using those funds in this fashion to help set us up for the future, 'cause ultimately, as commissioners, you know, our job is to, to think long-term, and I'm, I'm excited that we are looking at doing things that will help our community in the long run. So I, I appreciate the conversation. Just one final thing, I did have someone ask me why we didn't consider the library. I know I'm hitting you real cold with this, so I, but I think it was, it went back to the process of we requested proposals, those kinds of things.
Yeah, that, thank you for that question. The only thing that I might just add is probably because it was being used as the vaccination site, so.
Okay. Thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell has additional questions?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I have four short ones. These are, these are fairly easy. Do the agencies besides the county commission and the manager's office, did there are other agencies that are being moved over there, do they have a chance to review these, these plans and make comments about?
Yes, yeah, they, they all received the plans and were able to tell me whether or not it was gonna work.
So they've had, they've had a chance to comment and make sure that this works for all their needs?
Correct.
Okay. We have some folks that have reserved spots because of ADA issues here in this building. Do we have a way to do that in this other, in this new proposal? Can they have a reserved spot because they have an ADA requirement?
We will absolutely work with them if they have an ADA requirement.
Okay, that needs to happen, thank you very much. In terms of access, sometimes I work in this building late at night, sometimes I'll work in here on the weekends. So I need twenty-four-seven access. Is that gonna be something I can do in the new building?
Yeah, you'll, you will receive a proxy card.
Okay, very good. And the, the security that we're talking about, the one point five, one and a half FTEs, are they just doing certain hours, are they gonna be twenty-four-seven?
No, my understanding is they're gonna be just more or less an eight to five.
Eight to five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For the business hours that, that, that we would be there for the public.
I'm fine with that, I just wanna make sure I understood exactly what was the plan, what was the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. First, let's go to Commissioner Lopez.
Sorry, thank you. I just have one question. When we did the walkthrough on the auditorium on the lower level, is that, I know there's, I believe there was an elevator that went down, but I don't think I saw any seating for ADA. Is that gonna be handicap accessible?
We are gonna make, we are gonna take some rows of seating out to make that accessible for ADA seating.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. I agree that I'm still concerned about parking a little bit, and I wanna make sure that we have ability that we can validate parking permits, our parking coupons, so that the public doesn't have to pay if they come for official business with the courthouse. So make sure that we've got that option available. As far as the, the length of the contract, I, I think that we have a responsibility to make some decisions on where we're gonna go permanently. This ARPA money is going to run out, and that's what we're using to be able to fund this. I, I appreciate some previous commissions. They had the ability to go forth and build the NCAT facility, fifty million dollars. We're still paying bond issue on that. They had the ability in the past commissions to go over and build things like Exploration Place and Interest Bank Arena. So far in five years, I haven't seen the will to come forward with a building that we've known we've needed for some time. So what I'd like to task the staff to do is to come back with some real proposals in thirty days so that we know what we're going to do at the end of this contract, because this ARPA funding is going to run out. And it's gonna move over to general funds in order for us to be able to continue to pay a lease, and we've just heard that the cost of this lease is gonna go up in the future if, if we stay beyond the, this duration of this lease. So I think it's a time that we make a decision. This commission has a responsibility to the community to have a facility that the community can use and that we can use to do the public's business. So I'm gonna ask the staff to come back with some definite proposals in thirty days so that we can decide, so that we can start moving forward, so that once this lease runs out, we have a place to go, instead of just staying in temporary facilities. So that's, that's one of the concerns that I've got right now. It's gonna take time for us to build this new building, and we need to make sure that we are prepared to be able to, to move at that point in time. I know it's not ideal what we're going to be doing, but again, I wanna make sure that our staff knows that this is a temporary solution, not a permanent solution. And so I know that our staff has worked with you every step of the way on how that they're gonna continue to do their job. I do have some questions on costs. If you take a look, I'd, I'd like a breakout of what a hundred twenty-seven thousand and fifty-eight dollars is gonna get us for the auditorium. I don't understand, that's just a, a number, and I don't know what goes into that. So it's a lot of money. I don't know that we need all of that for that auditorium. It's a temporary facility, so make sure that we're putting the things in that we need rather than things that, there's a difference between wants and needs. I wanna make sure that they're all needs that are going into that. The courthouse police, I'm kinda torn on that, 'cause I don't know why that we need them, honestly. This is a building, if we weren't in this building right now with the courts, we wouldn't have security. I don't know why we need security in a new building, so you're gonna have to convince me on that, so I'm not sure that that eighty-some thousand dollars is, is something that's required. So those are, are my comments. The one thing is because this is an important issue, I don't see any public in the room right now, for sure, but I wanna make sure that if there's public here, that we open this up to public comments. So is there anyone in the room at this point in time that would like to open us up to public comments? Okay, I don't see any. I'll close public comments, but I wanted to make sure that that option was available, 'cause this decision is gonna impact the public. Commissioner Howell has some more questions. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to, I guess, comment back. The reason this has taken so long is because we have a, I think, a, a division of philosophy amongst the board commissioners, amongst the commissioners here. A couple of times during your comments, Commissioner Chairman, you use the word "build a new building," and I think that's one of our basic disagreements, is that I don't think we should build a new building, personally. I think there's, there are buildings all, there's buildings that have sold in the downtown footprint over the last several years that have been very affordable and very adequate for what, what our needs would have been. But we didn't, we did not consider those at the time, and there are still, there are still buildings downtown that I think are still available that would meet our needs. If we were to put this on a, on a ballot and have a ballot question, ask the public, shall Sedgwick County spend up to fifty million dollars to construct a new administration building to provide services from Sedgwick County government, I am pretty sure it would not pass. So with that in mind, I don't think that's where we ought to be going with this. If I was, if we, if we were to spend a fraction of that cost and, and meet the needs of government, I think that that is very defensible. Interest Bank Arena was voter-approved, and we actually did a really good job. We actually saved the money before we put a shovel in the ground. That's unheard of in government, but we did it that way during Interest Bank Arena. In all three of these cases, NCAT, Exploration Place, and Interest Bank Arena, all, all three of those are for the quality of life of the people we serve. One of those is about education, one of those, actually, two of those are about education. Exploration Place and, and NCAT are both about education. Interest Bank Arena is a, is an event center that things like Tim McGrogge is, that gets to come and perform for the community. So the, the public understands those things, and they, they, they support those things, but if we asked about an admin building, we're gonna find a much different type of support from the people we serve. So philosophically, I, I do absolutely wanna go forward, I wanna find a solution. I'm not committed to the downtown area, I think we need to be able to look out a little bit further, and I think there's plenty of spaces available that we, we can, we can figure out a way to, to make buildings work. The Reagan Building, we, we were gonna spend six million dollars refurbishing that building, and we ended up not doing that. I think for, we did a paint and carpet plus plan and spent about one-third of that cost and saved four million dollars. Does it, is it, is it a wonderful building? No, it's not wonderful, but it meets the needs of government. It does its job, it's adequate, it, it does what we need it to do. So, you know, the, the tag office over at Douglas and Meridian, we didn't build that building, we, we found a building that met our needs, and it took a long time to make that deal, but we made the deal, and it's actually worked out very, very well. And so at the end of the day, I think that the philosophical difference has caused this to slow down is because some people want to build and some people don't, and I think we have to solve that problem first. So again, we didn't, we not, we may, we may not need thirty-seven months to solve this if we find a building that's currently existing, and I would, I would like to see that be part of this discussion rather than simply go right to the idea that we have to build something new. So I, I just wanted to share my, my thoughts and my, my perspective on this. I may be in the minority here, and if the other commissioners wanna build something new, that's, that's totally fine, but I would like to continue to advocate for a less expensive solution. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, when I just asked the staff to come back with some decision within thirty days, I didn't say for a new building, I didn't say find an existing building, I wanna make sure that that's clear. Second thing is that as we take a look, whether it's an existing building or a new building, the cost, the cost of that, I've always asked for the cost of that, I always ask for what the lifecycle cost of the building is. And the lifecycle cost is critical. And every building that they've brought to us in the past, when we looked at the lifecycle cost, was more than the cost of construction of a new building. So I want to make sure that we are not penny wise and pound foolish as we move forward. It's great to sit here, if you're up for election and saying, "I'm saving the county this year a whole lot of money", but at the same time, when the county figures out that over the years you cost the county money, that's a mistake. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to just go back to the conversation around security. We live in a very volatile world, and we all kind of walk different paths up here. I mean, with all due respect, Chairman, I understand that you may not feel unsafe. But there are times, as a young woman, that I feel unsafe. And I'd like to, you know, make sure that when I go to work as an elected official, I'm in the public, right? I mean, we saw what happened in here. This is a very volatile time in our country especially. And I just want to make sure that not only do I feel safe, but the people that are coming to our commission meetings feel safe as well. So I have to just really reiterate the fact that I think security is of utmost importance. And I just want to make that fact known. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further comments. Move to approve the agreement and authorize Chairman's side. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on February 16, 2022.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning, Joe.
Yes, sir. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and this morning, we have seven items that we seek your approval. And this is from the regular, the meeting of the Bid of Boards and Contracts on February 16. Our first item was a bridge improvement, which is repair work on the bridge on 151st Street West from 85th and 93rd Streets North. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from PBX Corporation in the amount of $464,968.65. Item number two is a road improvement, which is constructing a paved road on 95th Street South for one and a half mile east of 135th Street West. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC, and that's alternate number one, and that's in the amount of $881,845.25. Item number three is the, two each of the tandem axle dump trucks. They're equipped with salt and sand spreaders, and also liquid anti-icing and de-icing systems. And this recommendation is to utilize the Sourcewell Contract 060920-KTC, and this is in the amount of $579,280. Item number four, ambulances and remounts for EMS and fleet management. This recommendation is to utilize the HGAC by contract, and that's AEV AM10-20, and it's with the American Response Vehicles and American Emergency Vehicles in the amount of $1,866,018. Item number five is the medical-grade oxygen for EMS in various departments. And this recommendation is to accept the bid from Wichita Welding Supply Incorporated. It's at the rates listed, including that attachment. The contract pricing will be for one year with four one-year options to renew. Let me turn my pages. Item number six, on-base maintenance and support, Division of Information and Technology. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Conic and Minolta Solutions USA Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $228,625.17. And our final item, item seven, is patient transportation for various departments. And this recommends accepting the best proposal, which is from Apple Bus Company at the rates listed. This will be a contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Thank you, Joe. I don't see any questions at this time. Move to approve Board's bids to contract. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner Meitzner? Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stolz with the County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items K through items AB.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree to move, I'd like to move all the consent items as Manager described, with the exception of item O.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
And at this time, Madam Clerk, call item O.
Item O, Agreement with Professional Engineering Consultants PEC for South Bluff Dewatering Study.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I think this deserves some discussion. I wish this hadn't been on consent, but... We spent a little bit of time talking about this yesterday. Let me state up front. I am very sympathetic to the challenges and problems that people are experiencing with the groundwater infiltration into their basements. That is a terrible problem to deal with. And these folks down there that are suffering from that problem desperately want a solution. And I want to be supportive of doing that. And the point I would start off by saying is, I think we have been supportive. We have spent $66,000 up to this point. About $21,000 of that was a deal with Derby to pump, to turn on a couple of pumps down south from, I think, November of '16 until about March of 2017. The rest of that money, we supported two, we could call them studies, but they were actually proposals put together by PEC. One for Hancock Acres, one for Peach Valley Estates. And the proposal would have been to install de-watering water wells with a control system that would regulate the water level to stay below the bottom of the basements. And unfortunately, they did not have enough support in either one of those communities, either one of those neighborhoods, they did not have enough support to actually go forward with those projects. That brings me to my point for talking about this today. I am not against developing yet another study and yet another proposal. First of all, let me state up front, we know that de-watering works, anybody who's listening. I'm not questioning whether de-watering works. We know it does. Susan Arlois described the kind of depression that happens around a water well. We know that is a real thing that happens. You can measure it, and you can prove it. So there's no question that this works. There is a question whether or not there is support in the community to support a project at the end. So we have $92,800 being provided by the State of Kansas to essentially study this. I guess we're not going to actually pump any more water. We're not going to install any more wells. We're simply going to put together the data we have currently to find out whether or not some type of de-watering project would actually work for the larger area. There's 651 homes, and the red line is bounded by the south, by 119th Street on the south, I-35, the turnpike on the west, the Arkansas River on the east, and 71st Street on the north. And in that area, there's 651 homes that may or may not have a problem. And what I'm asking, what I'm asking that we would do, let's find out how big this problem is. I know that Mr. Weber said we have problems at 113rd and Hillside. I'm not questioning that. I know we do. I know we have problems at Hancock Acres and Peach Valley Estates. I know we do. The question is, is there any region here that we can define a boundary around a number of homes where there's sufficient support to actually create a de-watering project? And the only way to know that is to actually ask the people who live there to answer that question. And so what we did not do before is we never actually sent out a letter by the county to people at Hancock Acres or Peach Valley Estates to find out the prevalence of the problem or the magnitude of the problem. If someone says, "I've lived here for 30 years. I've never had water in my basement", they're not going to want to pay $18,000 in specials, because it doesn't benefit them. But if someone says, "I'm dealing with this problem constantly. I have six sump pumps running continuously, and I've got spare sump pumps sitting there waiting to go in case one burns up", they would probably be very glad to pay $18,000 to solve this problem. But we don't know how many people are either into that spectrum. And we should have sent out letters to ascertain that. What they actually did is they had the community members go around and door knock and actually gather information manually. We didn't actually get in contact with some of the people who live there. And at the end of the day, there wasn't 50% of the people in either one of these communities that wanted to actually go forward with the project. We spent money to develop. And that bothers me, because we actually essentially wasted $66,000. Well, at least, maybe the $21,000 did help de-water them somewhat, but the balance of that, 45,000 on two surveys or two projects, was essentially wasted. And I don't want to waste another $92,000 doing the same thing again. So what I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is I'm glad to support the survey, as long as we can ascertain there's a neighborhood that has enough support for some type of improvement project that would actually, would be supported by that neighborhood. So I think we need to send out a letter to the 651 homes and find out where the problem exists and to what degree it exists by asking them some very basic questions. This letter would cost us $500, maybe $600 or so. It might cost a couple hundred bucks to analyze the results. But if you spend $1,000 on the front end, you might save $92,000 on the back end if you find out there's not support anywhere to pay for this project. And that's all I'm asking, is let's find out whether or not there is a regional, a region around some homes that would support some type of an improvement project. And if so, let's go forward with the survey. If there's not, then we don't need to spend the money. So I want to help them out, but let's find out. What we did not do before is we did not ask them to validate or to define essentially where the problem actually is. We heard from people who are very passionate and very frustrated, and I support them. I want them to have a solution. But you're not going to get people, this is essentially about 12 square miles of property. The furthest north, I heard someone say we have a problem. We know it for sure, is 113rd and Hillside. Well, this is, goes three miles to the north of that. I should excuse you, two miles to the north of that. We know that if you pump for, we saw yesterday, data that said if you pump for 60 days and a mile and a quarter away, you get a reduction in water table about one foot. So if someone is experiencing, you know, groundwater infiltration at the south end of this district, and the nearest watering station is going to be farther to the south, they may not get any benefit at all. Why would they want to commit to a fairly expensive special assessment tax when they don't get a benefit? So we need to find out where the problem is and make sure we actually have some type of ability to draw a line around the people who are mostly impacted by this are willing to spend some of their own money to pay for the infrastructure. If we can't determine that on the front end, this study makes no sense. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We would approve the study with the, as long as we send out a letter to determine where the problem exists and to ensure that the study concentrates on a neighborhood that has a majority of support for any type of improvement, any type of capital improvement project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I am concerned about the letter approach idea. If we're talking about having the data, I mean, I know you like data, right? So if we send a letter to all these people who have been, I mean, struggling with this stuff for decades, and they are at their, they're just so frustrated. I mean, they have so many people. And we know this, because this is the biggest problem that was brought to my attention when I first started. This is a conversation that's been happening for quite some time. I don't, I wasn't here at the time that those other studies were done. I think you might have been, so you could probably speak to how that came about and why there wasn't a letter sent at that time. But today, we're looking at more of a regional approach. This is something that the state is offering to pay for, because they can use the data that they get in other areas in the state. So I do think it's a little disingenuous to send a letter to people who are so frustrated already and ask them basically if they would be willing to write a blank check, because I would not say that either. I mean, I would not be willing to say that I'm going to do whatever this takes, not knowing what it would take, which is why we need the study. So saying that we should not do this, or asking, I guess, if they would be willing to do this without the information, just doesn't seem logical to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed this yesterday, and Susan and Jim were here, and Gravik provided a great explanation, background presentation. And this is a Kansas, the state is now involved in this. The Water Office, Kansas Water Office, KWO, which is, I think, a first time to do a comprehensive study of this whole area. And I am in favor of eventually sending out a letter, but I'd like for us to know what we're going to be advising and sending and potential options and everything else after the study is done. So I did not hear a second to Commissioner Howell's motion, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve this study as prepared.
Just make sure that we stay in accordance with the rules. We had a motion, but we didn't have a second at that point in time. So right now, we have a valid motion and a second. I just want to make sure everybody understands where we're at on that. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This be, one more point about this, I think is very important, is this problem essentially started a little more than 20 years ago when Derby contracted with Wichita. What had happened prior to that was Derby was using well water for a municipal water supply, and they had 11 water wells that they used. But they were hitting, they were getting close, they were approaching, if you will, pumping limits, capacity limits from the state's regulatory agency. They weren't allowed to continue to just draw more and more water out of the ground. And part of the reason that they do that is because if you draw too much water out of the ground, it causes some of the people, some people, they have water wells that run dry. And so there's limits on what you can draw from the ground. So Derby contracted with Wichita to get onto the Wichita municipal water supply, which, and the water comes from Cheney, is treated by Wichita, and ultimately goes through a very large water main that goes out to the city of Derby, provides their water. And that took 20 years to pay for that capital improvement. And so Derby signed a 20-year contract, which is now expired. And so Derby has options now to do other things. And so Derby, especially when the Wichita water main broke, the four-foot water main broke recently, I think it actually caused Derby to realize, I think, that we have a large community that is too dependent on one water source. And I think there's a renewed interest in developing, if you will, a secondary water source for the city of Derby, which is now a first-class city and over 25,000 people. So there seems to be a renewed effort on Derby's part to create a new treatment, water treatment facility. And they would use as a primary source, well water, again, from the same area. And so here, in two or three years, it's intent, it sounds like, from Derby, and it sounds like PEC actually has been working with Derby to develop some locations for some water wells. They might be the same locations, might be different locations, but PEC is not telling us that. But Derby has an intention right now of turning these water wells back on. And I think if they have a shortage of water, because they're hitting some maximum pumping caps, once again, they would use the Wichita water as a supplement. So there is a plan, and in a few years from now, theoretically, these pumps in this area will be turned back on. And the problem that developed when Derby moved away from these 11 water wells, the problem that developed is the water tables increased drastically or substantially. And that's really when this water infiltration problem primarily got started for most of these people that are suffering today. Previous commissioners said these people are desperate, and they're beside themselves, are frustrated. I agree. I know they are. I'm not suggesting that they're not. I know they are. I've talked with them. I've attended the meetings. I've advocated for them. I've stood up, and I fought for them. I supported the $66,000. But there's not, apparently was not a majority of people in their neighborhood that felt the same way. And there's the problem. We didn't actually ask the question the first time. We should have. We made a mistake, and so we wasted $45,000 developing two projects that had no chance of moving forward. I'm suggesting that we get the data on the front end. I'm surprised we would actually be willing to spend nearly $100,000 to move forward again. And we don't understand by getting information about the scope of this problem. Three out. Someone also said... Someone also said that they thought the state was, the state would pay for the improvements. That is not true. State has no commitment to pay for any infrastructure. They, this ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars is the limit right now, there's no plan to ask the state for any type of solution. I talked to the, to the senator that started this conversation at the state level, he's a little surprised by some of this information that I've shared with you today. He was under the impression that the, the issue of dewatering and all that was, was being questioned by the, by the commissioner or by the county. I don't think we're questioning that. There's no question that it works. But he was under the impression that was the problem, which is why this study came up. And now that we can move past the point that we know it works, that kind of defeats the whole point of spending ninety, or ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars. We're not, we're not questioning whether it works, that's not, that's not the question. But that's what, that's what, that's what the question that the state thought we had, which is why they supported the study, was to prove that it works. We don't have that question. And so even the person that started this whole process, actually, I spent an hour talking with him on Saturday, I don't think he, he agrees that this study isn't even necessary. What we ought to be doing is find out where the problem exists and develop solutions in those areas that are willing to support a, a solution. That's what we need to do. But meantime, while that's going on, please be, please be advised, in two or three years from now, hopefully, Derby's going to start pumping water out of the ground, and some of this may go away anyway. So the question I would have, if I was one of these homeowners, is, do you want to take on an eighteen thousand dollar special assessment tax to be paid over twenty years, knowing that in a couple of years from now, this problem may go away? Depends on how big your problem is. If you have a, water infiltrate your basement once every four or five years, you may want to wait. If this is the problem you're dealing with every single day, like some people are, then you would be desperate for a solution today. The question is, where is the majority of people that's going to pay for this? It's not the state of Kansas, and it certainly isn't Central County. So to get data is very, very important to, to move forward. And to, to move forward without data is not smart. We have lots of information here. You could even tell people, look, there was two projects presented in the past, here's what they would have cost, but there wasn't majority support in your neighborhood to do this. Therefore, it did not happen. We have lots of information we can share with them. But the idea that we're going to come in and we're going to do a study, and we're going to provide a solution, and they're not going to pay for it, is not true. If there's going to be a solution, they have to pay for it, unless you want this to go to general assessment, general taxes.
You support some kind of a fund to fix a problem that they are not having, is kind of useless data to have. The valuable data is where would dewatering wells work the best across this region, and that, I believe, is what this study is going to produce. So before I call for a vote, do you have something you need to add? Mr. Weber.
So Jim Weber, the Director of Public Works, I just want to clarify one thing, we are in a public forum, and I want to make clear, this problem predates the turning off of the Derby wells. This problem depends on where you're at. For those homes, and there's a few of them that are close to Derby wells, they didn't have a problem until the wells were turned off. And I don't believe that's true. But farther north, over in Peach Valley, they definitely had this problem before Derby ever shut down the wells. This goes back a long way. And so the value of the study is trying to figure out the magnitude of the problem across this area. And really, to me, the important value is, we have people who believe that turning a Derby wells on are going to fix the problem. This gives us a chance to evaluate whether that's in fact true or not. And we'll have access to information coming out of Derby and the work they're doing. And so the value is in really scientifically determining what the magnitude of the problem is and where that is. And we'll see where it goes from there. Mostly, I just want to clarify that this problem is location-based, and when you had the problem, is based on whether you're in a location that's affected by the Derby wells or not affected by the Derby wells. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the discussion. You know, I, I am curious, PEC did our, PEC put together the two previous proposals, is that correct?
They are studies that resulted in proposed solutions.
Okay. It says here, "The purpose of this study is to better understand the topography, geology, and hydrology of this area, and determine if suitability, suitably located dewatering wells associated with proper water removal could alleviate the basement, alleviate the basement flooding issues without adversely impacting existing water wells." Is that not what they did before in these two areas, Hancock Acres and Peach Valley Estates?
They studied probably a total of a half section of ground out of the twelve, I haven't counted them, you're saying twelve square miles. They've studied very little of the area.
And the proposal was for five dewatering wells at Hancock Acres and three at Peach Valley Estates, different depths and different, different designs, but that's what that resulted in. Why, why would we not at least send, you know, we have, we have existing projects, we, we have a solution, turnkey solution ready, ready to go. Why would we not at least send out, send out a letter to those two neighborhoods to find out scientifically how many of those homes actually have a problem, and find out how many of those folks are willing to support the proposal that's already on the table? The majority of these homes that have been contacting the county commission are in, are in one of those two neighborhoods. There's a hundred and fifty-five homes, I guess, in one and roughly ninety or so in the other. I, I, I think that if you, and Susan and I have talked about this before, if you live far away from one of these wells, you're not going to get the benefit from it. So you have, you need to put one of these wells near a concentration of homes. So a neighborhood is more likely to benefit than, than a farmer's house that's basically, you know, quarter mile from any, any neighbor.
I totally agree on that, but here's the issue that I have. There's this prevailing thought down there that the Derby wells are the answer for long distance. And really, one of the biggest values of the study is to establish what is the influence of the wells that they're going to have, and be able to go back to people and say, okay, you need to seriously look at this earlier project because what Derby does is not going to help you. We don't really know that right now.
Well, Clem Dickerson is one of the guys that has the data. He, he can show you exactly what happened to these water, water tables when the Derby wells were shut off.
I, I disagree that he can't. I, he cannot.
Okay. Well, there's a big debate there, I guess, but that aside, we have two projects that we paid for that were proposed, and we don't right now know in those two neighborhoods, again, concentration of homes is where the water wells would do the most good. If you live out, isolated from other homes, it's not likely you're going to get any water well that's going to solve a problem for you, no matter what happens. So if you lived in an isolated area, there's no way someone's going to support a solution that's not going to benefit them in some way. Or, we don't even know if they have a problem. But even if they have a problem, to, to financially commit to some solution when you're far away from any potential water well is extremely unlikely. The, the water wells are going to go where the concentration of homes exist. We already have two projects for three wells in one location and five in the other. Why don't we at least reach out to them, not by knocking on the door and them not being home and having misrepresentation perhaps? I think we need to let those people know specifically, here's what was proposed, you have an option to say yes or no, you want to do this or not. We should send out, if government doesn't communicate through Facebook, we need to send out a letter and let them know, we spent money on your behalf, here's what the project set is, do you want to support this or not? We've never actually checked with all the neighbors already to know whether or not there's fifty percent that would support this or not. Why are we doing this again, essentially the same project? We've already done it twice, and we've never actually asked the question to the people who wanted us to do this. Let them actually clarify their position. I, I don't know why we have not done that. So again, I, I want to, I want to support them, but I don't want to waste, I don't want to waste more money doing the same thing we've already done. Thank you.
Thank you. And once we know the scope of the problem from having this study completed, we can send out a letter for those that are affected, but sending it out to everybody blanket makes absolutely no sense. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman. While I appreciate your input on this, we are talking about an issue that's in District Two, and my job up here is to advocate for my constituents. This is the biggest thing that's been brought to my attention on repeat by so many more people than just the two neighborhoods that have been studied. And the conversation we had yesterday, it was twenty-three point six percent of the homes in the area are in those neighborhoods. And I think a lot has probably changed since those studies were done. So using old data and data that doesn't pertain to the majority of the homes in this area, it just seems, like I said, illogical to send a letter out to everybody with information that isn't, that doesn't go to their home individually. So I appreciate all of the conversation. I'm going to continue to advocate for this part of District Two, and I'm excited to see what comes of the study. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Unless I get mischaracterized, and people will put words in my mouth, I'll support the motion, but I, I think we need to have data, and I, I don't, I don't, when you say it makes no sense, to reach out to the people, ask them a very basic question, do you have a problem? How long have you lived in your house? How often has the problem happened? How deep is the water? Those are basic questions. I think to get a, a scope on that, which has never been done, it makes a total, it makes total sense. There's six hundred and fifty-one homes in this area, it wouldn't cost a lot of money to get that data. We should start with data. But to, to the previous commissioner's comment, this is old data, the last one of these studies was done on February the third, twenty twenty. It's not very old data. I, I don't want to be mischaracterized. I, I want you to know that when, when we did this thing, going back to twenty sixteen and seventeen, when these conversations were really hot, two commissioners stood up and really fought for this, that was Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Howell. I've gone to meetings, I've, I have, I've done everything I possibly can to help these folks, and I was extremely disappointed when we gave them a turnkey solution and they didn't want to go forward. And the reason they didn't want to go forward is because it wasn't a majority of people who wanted to spend eighteen thousand dollars. So why do we not at least know where, which homes have the passionate homeowners that want to see a solution? We should have started there. We didn't, we, we skipped a step. We, we, we relied on people to knock on doors, by neighbors knocking on doors and having conversations from neighbor to neighbor. The government never reached out and actually did a good job of communicating. So to say it doesn't make sense to communicate from the government's perspective in a more assuredly way to make sure we communicate, and they know exactly what we're doing and exactly what's being proposed, that makes total sense. But I'm going to get mischaracterized by people thinking I don't support them. I do. I want this problem fixed. I have, I have fought for this since twenty sixteen. So I'll support the motion, but I think it's, it's wrong for us to do this, this is political. I want to see a letter go out first. That's not crazy. It is, makes total sense. But I'll support the motion, thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, so that I'm not mischaracterized, I said that I don't have a problem with sending out a letter after we know where the scope of the problem is, but sending it out to blanket to a lot of people that don't know where the problem is. Madam Kirk, we have a motion and a second on the board, please call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Welcome back, Tanya.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Last week, Kansas Association of Counties hosted County Day at the Capitol, and I know that several commissioners had obligations, but Chairman Dennis and Commissioner Meitzner were able to attend some meetings with President of the Senate, Senator Ty Masterson, Representative Brenda Landwehr, and Senators Dan Kershaw and Jean Solentrop, and Representative Will Carpenter, and also House Majority Leader, Representative Dan Hawkins. During these meetings, discussion on our legislative platform and mental health were the top priorities, and how we can make steps to move forward on our legislative platform. Last week, House Bill twenty-two eighty-one, which is the nine-eight-eight bill, our suicide prevention lifeline, which is also on our legislative platform, this is the committee that is chaired by Representative Landwehr. The bill passed committee, and the committee amended the bill by reducing the fee per line from fifty cents to twenty cents, and it's estimated to bring in seven million per year. And in addition, the committee included language requesting another three million per year out of the state general fund. We heard from Watkins Public Strategies that in subcommittee hearings, they approved fourteen point three million for community corrections, and five million was approved for community mental health centers. And so this will go, move on to the appropriations committee now for approval. We also heard that fifteen million was taken out for mental health hospitals out of the governor's budget, but it will be reconsidered in the omnibus bill, the omnibus bill being the budget bill that will be discussed during the veto session. House Bill twenty-six seventy-six, this is the bill that Commissioner Howell helped us to get as a bill, and it's on our legislative platform. This is authorizing counties to create a code inspection and enforcement fund and expanding the scope of the equipment reserve fund to include other computer and electronic technologies. This will have a hearing next week, Wednesday at nine AM, and we know for sure that our CFO, Lindsay Poe-Rousseau, will virtually testify on this, and Wayne here, Commissioner Howell will be able to testify that, on that as well. This morning, I sent a bill to you all that we will be monitoring, that's Senate Bill five seventeen. Let me read this real quick, what that bill contains. It's an act concerning public records relating to the disclosure thereof upon the Open Records Act, requiring public agencies to allow certain persons to listen to audio recordings or to view video recordings that were made at a juvenile detention facility or juvenile intake and assessment services facility, and relate to an incident in which a juvenile was seriously injured or died, amending KSA forty-five two fifty-four and repealing the existing section. So we will be monitoring that bill and making you aware of any actions on that bill. As stated last week, February twenty-fourth is turnaround day. This is the last day to consider non-exempt bills in their house of origin. There will be no committee hearings today or tomorrow, and few hearings next week. Chairman of the committees will be looking at all bills for hearings, so the week after next will become very busy in Topeka. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you need to provide me with any direction on legislative issues, or any specific information that you need regarding legislative bills or actions. And of course, Watkins Public Strategies continues to keep us aware of what's happening in Topeka through our bill tracker and weekly updates.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that summary. A couple of things I want to make sure that everybody understands, or give a little feedback, actually. When Commissioner Meitzner and I were up in Topeka, we had an opportunity to meet with a lot of the leadership, and we were looking mainly at health concerns. First of all, we did have some discussions about trying to see if we could use some ARPA funding to have a health science center here in, in Wichita, and that looked fairly positive. So I'm very happy that, that looks like that some of the leadership that are key to making this happen are in favor of a health science center here. It's a lot of money, but it's definitely going to have a huge impact on Sedgwick County. The other issues that we worked while we were there were mainly related to a regional mental health facility, and I think that there is a lot of support for that. The questions that came up on the regional mental health facility is a better definition of how many beds that we need, what type of beds that we need, is fifty beds enough? So what I've asked the staff to do is to put together like a one or two-page document that we can get back up to the legislators that really finds, defines a little bit more on what a regional mental health facility is. So I, I think that that's moving forward. The other issue that we worked very hard while we were discussing, in discussions, was some funding for the, kind of a, an idea like we've got down in San Antonio with the Haven for Hope and with the Restoration Center. We do have funding already that we're looking at for our Calm Care Crisis Center, and that's really what the Restoration Center is down in San Antonio. I don't know that, that they fully understand exactly that that is one part of, of San Antonio. And as a result, some of the questions that came up were, how many people do we need in, in the crisis center? What are the qualifications? Came up several times. Do they need master-level discuss, qualifications? Can you get, have a supervisor with a master or a PhD if you need a PhD? And then under that, maybe have bachelor-level folks? So again, we probably need some type of, of a short one-page or two, three or four-page, whatever it takes in order to make sure that we define what that is. We, we already have an idea of what the staffing level is required in our crisis center. So I don't think that that's a real difficult paper to put together. a real difficult paper to put together. The other half of San Antonio is Haven for Hope, and it is separate. It works together, but they're kind of co-located, but it really has a different mission than the Crisis Center does. And as they were asking for staffing and so forth on that, really, that's kind of driven by the nonprofits, because the nonprofits are located over in the Haven for Hope. And San Antonio has like 180 nonprofits located within that facility. So as we put together this paper, we need to make sure that they understand that there is really two parts to the San Antonio model, and how that that works together to serve the needs down there, and how that it can work together to serve the needs up here. So I don't know that actual giving staffing numbers and qualifications and so forth for the Haven for Hope part is as critical as it is for the Crisis Center part. So the other thing was, it was the County Day up at the Capitol, and it was kind of nice visiting with the other commissioners that were from around the region and talking with some of the issues that they were having or having a lot of the same issues that we're having. So that part of it was valuable. I spent quite a bit of the time in the rotunda where those folks are located. So I want to make sure that I didn't miss something. Commissioner Meisner was with me every step of the way, so I want to make sure that if he has any additions.
No, you summarized well. I would add that it seems there's, as far as the mental health hospital, as we've discussed openly, and number of beds and everything else, it was said numerous times that it was not a political agenda item that's controversial between the Democrats and Republicans. They're all in favor of doing something. So we are working hard to give them a finite, our communities, give them a finite number and a plan to help fund, because they want to be very supportive. They understand the issue of mental health, and that was probably one that didn't surprise me as much as it was surprising that the energy and the, nobody was against it, and everybody's for it. So that's my only other comment.
Well, thank you. I agree completely with what Commissioner Meisner said, is that it is widely, there's a lot of support behind those three issues that I just brought up. And all we need to do is make sure that we have the background information that they've got readily at their fingers as questions come up, so that they can answer those. Because it's not a Republican or Democrat issue. Everybody up there thinks that we need a regional mental health facility. I think everybody's on board with the San Antonio model that we were talking about. I think that there is support for the Health Science Center. So I appreciate the broad support that is going on up there. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So HB 2676 is an exempt bill. It was introduced into state, but it got assigned to local government. I was told early on, this probably would have a hearing on March the 3rd. But I see the committee only meets on Mondays and Wednesdays, so they picked Wednesday at 9:00, which happens to be exactly when our meeting starts next week here. We do need to, I would suggest in terms of strategy, we do need to have at least two proponents on the bill. And I'm sure Lindsay would do a great job. She's probably the very best person to testify. It would be nice to either have KAC or Jason Watkins provide supporting testimony as well. And if they don't want to do that, then I don't know if I can find a way to slip out for a minute and testify and come back. But we really do need to have a second proponent for this bill. I don't think there's going to be any opponents. I did email the Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee asking for this bill hearing. So I appreciate them scheduling this. I think it's important to Central County. Just FYI, this is one of those things that we've talked about for, I think, at least more than five or six years now since I've been here. This is important to our budget process. And so I think it's a very important bill. I think it's likely to pass. I don't anticipate any opponents. But if we don't have, at least have a couple of proponents on the bill, I think they don't feel like it's important to us. So we need to have at least a couple. So I don't know, if we can get Jason or KAC to support, that's best. If they're not willing to do that, then let me know that, and I'd be glad to testify if that's okay.
Commissioner, I'm happy to reach out to Jason and KAC on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions on the latest agenda. Thank you, Tanya. I appreciate it. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Any commissioners have anything? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Tomorrow is the point in time count. It actually starts at the same time that we're all having our en-bunk meeting. The point in time count is conducted. It's a requirement of HUD, that the Continuum of Care, which I serve on, will be getting a homeless count. Those experiencing homeless and unhoused individuals in our community will be a snapshot in time. So that is happening tomorrow. I also just wanted to state publicly that I have resigned from the Humankind Board, and wanted to make sure that I stated that publicly, so that everyone is aware. I will be updating my report. So I'd like for you all to know that, too. But that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Well, yesterday, I had a board meeting with the zoo board, and unfortunately, we lost our previous director. Right now, though, we've got a great replacement, and Tim Kaufman is standing in for the director. So he's got a whole lot of jobs ahead of him in the future. They are starting the search process, and Sedgwick County will obviously be involved in the search process because the director is an employee of Sedgwick County. So that's moving forward. And we're not, we had a great zoo director. I want to thank him. Dr. Jeff did a super job for the time, four, five years that he was here. A lot of things have changed at the zoo for the better. So we're not going to really miss a beat, I don't think, with Tim and the leadership that they've got over there. And we'll find a great new zoo director as we move forward. But what is happening right now, which is really kind of cool, I don't know how many of you have ever been to a stingray cove, where that you can put your hand in the water and feel a stingray, and they'll swim right past you, and you'll be able to touch them as they swim past. But it's under construction right now. As soon as the weather gets nice, we're going to have stingrays and a couple sharks in there, but the sharks don't eat your fingers, so don't worry about it when you put your hands in the water. You will have to wash your hands and arms, because we don't want any kind of oils and so forth from humans as you're putting your fingers into the water. And you will have an opportunity to buy some food that you can feed the sharks and the stingrays with. And I don't know how many of you have ever had a chance to go to one. There is a stingray cove down at the zoo in Oklahoma City, and I took my grandkids down there. And it is really kind of a neat experience to be able to do that. So that's coming up. The other thing that is going to be a great addition to the zoo is that we have a train that is being built as we speak. Martha Buford's estate has funded two trains for us. The tracks have been purchased. We think that they'll be in sometime in the month of March. I believe they're coming from France. Am I not correct, Tim? Spain, I'm sorry. They're coming from Spain. And so they should be shipped, and we're expecting them in May. The two trains that we're going to have at the zoo, one of them is pretty well-fishing construction right now. It's a real cool-looking steam engine, but it runs off electric power that is recharged with solar energy, so it's efficient. It'll pull either four or five cars. We're going to initially have it pulling four cars, but we are able to expand it to a fifth car, depending on what the ridership is. As soon as they finish this first train, the second one, and the neat thing about it, they're being built right here in Sedgwick County at Chance Manufacturing. So we've seen a picture of the trains and the cars. As soon as they're finished, we'll get some nice pictures on Sedgwick County website, so that we can show those. They'll be on the zoo website. But the exciting things are happening at the zoo. Again, we want to thank Dr. Jeff Etling for his service over the four, five years that he was with us, and we look forward to our next director. Does anyone else have any committee reports? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Any commissioners have anything during the other? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give a brief congratulations and shout out to the Lord's Diner just celebrated their 20 years of service. 6,000 or 6 million meals over the last 20 years. About 6,000 volunteers in the community have worked there. And so I just wanted, they wanted to do a celebration, but with COVID, they've done a nice little video instead. And hopefully, they will be serving inside the diner here in the real short future, and that will help alleviate some of the homeless and some of the needy and the hungry that gather outside. They'll be able to come back inside for a nice meal, no questions asked. So my congratulations to Jan Habberly and the staff at the Lord's Diner, and congratulations, 20 years of serving the community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. It's a great project over there. We appreciate it. Anything else for other? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
We do not have a requirement for executive session. I don't believe anything else. We need to come before the board. Any commissioners have anything? Seeing nothing, we're adjourned. Thank you all.